All right, it's six o'clock. A quorum being present. I'll call the meeting to order tonight.
Really?
Our first order of business is to approve the school board election results from last week. Those results are in your shared folder. They have been certified by county clerks and they are official. So we need to approve those as a sitting board. So I will ask for a roll call vote to approve those election results.
Do we need a motion?
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
You can't. Motion made by Adam. Seconded by Jeff. And the motion passes. And we will now swear in our new members to the Board of Education. Matt Gumm and Scott Foster to their three-year terms.
It was three years, I didn't know that.
No, we need to stand in front of them.
We always do.
Turn the prep way, put your leg out a little bit.
Someone take a photo?
Go ahead and do it.
Okay. You guys want to raise your hand. Don't look so serious.
Definitely don't want to be in the picture.
All right, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the school director in and for the Willesbury School District to the best of your ability?
I will.
I will.
Do, maybe?
Congratulations.
I guess we'll accept that. Have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy Scarborough. Doing such a fine swearing in people. All right, I will now entertain nominations for president of the Board of Education.
I'll pick Matt Gumm. Seconded that.
Are there any other nominations for Board President? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to look at it.
Motion made by Matt Hobson, seconded by Jeff Lovin.
Aye.
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 Stand.
Stand.
Motion passes. Matt Gumm is our Board President. I will now entertain nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education.
Seconded.
Are there any other nominations for Vice President? I'll entertain a motion for Matt Hobson as Vice President.
So move.
Adam?
Seconded.
Scott?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Matt Hobson is our Vice President. Thank you both for your service and I happily turn the meeting over to Board President.
Mr. President.
I appreciate you. No, sincerely, I do. I hope that I can live up to your expectations and appreciate all your help. So, moving forward with the consent agenda.
Well, hang on, we need to... nominations for MSBA delegates.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And an alternate.
Go ahead. First, does anybody want to volunteer for...
Debbie definitely does. She's not sworn in.
That's true.
Oh, she's not yet.
I plan on going this year, so if Debbie could do it and I'll be the alternate if that worked out or anyone else.
We could, could we table that till next month when Debbie is here?
Yeah, we could.
Okay, so let's just table that until the May meeting and we can assign that role at that time. And then the last thing we need to do, Mac, is...
Right.
Yeah, the other three things.
Okay, so we need to appoint a custodian of records, which would be our superintendent, and then a Ford Secretary, which would be Mandy and our treasurer. Can we do all three of those?
Yes.
Yeah. So a motion would be in order to approve Marty and Dr. Spence as the Custodian of Records, Mandy as the Ford Secretary, and Jamie as the Treasurer.
So move. Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we're going to move on to consent agenda. Do you have any changes? You have the agenda, the merits, financial report there. And then personnel. Does anyone have any questions concerning consent agenda items? If not, then I would receive a motion to approve as presented.
So move.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
Couple of things before the administrative before. That's all right. Just a reminder, your CSIP goals are there. Also, we had a good finance and policy committee meeting last week and the week before. And I appreciate everybody that served on those committees and the policy committee. We'll talk about policies tonight and then the financial committee will look at the budget for the first time in May. So we'll have some information for you in May on what the budget will look like for FY25. Senate Bill 727, I know I sent out an email about that. That is a dangerous bill for rural schools. It's an omnibus bill that is moving through Congress right now with a lot of big educational items in it. It moved past committee and they said they could receive a vote on it as early as tomorrow. So I will keep you updated on that Senate bill that's causing a big stir in education right now. Open enrollment, which we talked about a lot. There has not been a peep of open enrollment this legislative session. They have dropped that and all of their attention has moved to vouchers and then Senate Bill 727. So just an interesting legislative session. Feels like maybe we do have some momentum to stop that bill, but we'll see what it, how people vote when it comes to the board. Also, I sent you an email this afternoon with some CTE funding updates. So when you get a chance to check your email, you can look through that. Mr. Owens did a good job of compiling all of that along with myself and Jamie. If you have any questions on that, be sure to let us know, but just kind of give you an update on where we're at with our CTE funding. But we're excited about what we're doing over there and the amount of grant and donations and then the money that has come in to help support that has really been pretty amazing. So that's all I have.
Nick, you want to go first?
So we've been busy. Testing time, we've had pre-ACT, ACT. We're currently in our second week of EOC testing. We will have a DESI Quality Assurance Visit on Friday. We'll have somebody from DESI down checking the EOC testing. Friday, we will also have people from the Missouri Leadership Development System working with our assistant principals and some administrators from other schools on campus. And Friday, we will also have some members of the State Board of Education and possibly Senator Esslinger on campus as well. So Friday will be a busy day all over campus for us with visitors. Other things have been going on. Junior job shadowing. Students get to go out and experience what it's like to work in a career field that they think they're interested in and see how that works. Spring sports are in full swing when the weather cooperates. Something new this year that we had was Senior Signing Day. So we got to celebrate the seniors and their choice of career or college or tech school or whatever choice they have made to pursue after they graduate. We had our banner, our backdrop and everything set up. They got to bring family in and friends and take pictures and celebrate what their future plans are. And that was a pretty big hit. I think the kids liked it. I think the family members liked it and it was pretty cool. Andrew had it hooked up so people in the district could watch it on YouTube. So the elementary school, middle school, high school, wherever there was TV, they could see who was signing and watch that and that was pretty neat, too. And some of the elementary teachers and students came over, got pictures with former students that they had had or their A-plus tutors. And so it was a pretty good, pretty good time. And we hope to continue that and make it better next year. And Megan Wilson was, we had the idea and she took it and just ran with it and it was a big success. And then another thing that's going on last weekend, Skills USA. It's an organization that a lot of the CTE programs can participate in different contests and things. And so our aviation group participated this first time we've done that. And two of our students, Jeff Brazier and Clayton Wake, went with Mr. Knapp to this contest at, I think it was at Lynn Tech. And there were four or five parts of it. And our guys knew two parts and they did two parts really well. The FAA test part of it and the flying part of it. And I think the judges' words were, our guys blew them, the rest of them, out of the water with their flight. They were so good that they lost a few points in some other areas, but they were so good in the flight part that they blew everybody out of the water. They took first place in the state in that competition. So that was pretty neat for the first time doing it. And I talked to Jeff this morning and he was, he was excited. And a couple of teachers were standing there as we were talking and you could see his face light up as he was talking about it. So pretty good accomplishment for them. We're proud of that. Other things, a lot of it's senior related. We've got prom, we've got Senior Project Night. If you haven't signed up to judge, please consider doing that. Senior trip, senior banquet, graduation, all those things. I think four weeks of school is what we've got left. So it's going by fast and we're going to put a lot into the last few weeks of school. Any questions?
I'll just say, as a parent, the Senior Signing Day was a really neat experience and not just the students that are going to college, but, you know, going to other trade schools and to the job force and to watch the A-plus kids pile in and get pictures taken with these kids. It was just a really, really great day at the high school and I really appreciate everybody for putting that on.
Okay. We appreciate our teachers, too, because that was a little bit of a disruption. Kids going out of class and coming back and different things. So we appreciate the flexibility of our teaching staff and things like that. Thank you.
We could probably still get you guys into prom as well if you desire to go on Saturday. No takers.
I got to get a felt wipe. I'm rolling on it.
All right, so our attendance is hanging steady at the middle school. And overall, just as far as kids being there, our absenteeism is down, so that's a good thing. I think the sickness may have left us, hopefully. On the 28th, we had a pep assembly. That was a good time for all of our spring sports and I'm trying to think who else we noticed during that time. Who was it?
Club Bear Volleyball.
Oh, yeah, Club Bear Volleyball. So sports related, pep assembly, and I think then also the chess club team, that was who I was thinking of. We had our staff meeting on the third as normal. And then on the fifth, we had our spring social. That's always a big deal at the middle school. And Ms. Drake and the student leaders put that on and we got, we had a bunch of teachers that volunteered to make that a success. And it was a, it was a great time. So we split that up. Where the fifth and sixth grade come for about an hour and a half and then the seventh and eighth grade come for the second block of that for about an hour and a half. And those kids had an absolute ball. So it was a good time and it was much appreciated, the work that was put into that by Ms. Drake, the student leaders, as well as the rest of the staff that showed up. Because they do that completely, you know, voluntarily. So really appreciate them. On the, on the eighth, we had the fourth quarter progress report cycle. We had our PD Day and of course, we all went home and celebrated the eclipse. So I'll talk a little bit more about our PD Day here in just a little bit. The 12th, we're looking forward to Mr. Malum along with the Missouri Leadership Development Group. They're going to be doing a culture walk through, I think, all the buildings on campus there. So that is some of our newer administrators. Mr. Cochran, who else?
Mr. Schwalm.
Schwalm, Forrest, they're all involved in that. So we look forward to that. Hopefully we get some, some good feedback from them. On the 15th to the 19th, we are going to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week at the middle school. That is not actually Teacher Appreciation Week, but that's when we were going to celebrate at the middle school. We've got map testing coming up, the 22nd to the 26th, and then also the 29th through the 3rd of May. So that kind of blocks those two weeks out. That first week in May, I think, is the actual Teacher Appreciation Week. But we have the Culture and Climate Committee that is heavily involved in planning and preparing this and that's some of our teachers along with Allison and I can't remember who all is on that, but planning for that. And so we've got a lot of, a lot of things planned for Teacher Appreciation Week, just to show them how much we appreciate them. The attendance field trip, we talked about that a little bit or I overheard some discussion about that. That is going to be on the 17th, so that's next Wednesday is when we will do that. We're going to take some kids out, the students that met 98% across the board or better on their attendance for the second semester. We're going to reward them with a little day out to Noblet. I think we're going to cook, maybe do some hiking, some math reading, possibly some fishing. So it's going to be a good day. I think we have close to 100 kids that have qualified for that. So that's, that's really good. That's really good. So we're proud of them for, for being here. And then, of course, our, our spring sports are in full swing. Our poor middle school baseball team, they cannot get a game in for the weather. They've played one game. I think they've had, I think at least five canceled and rescheduled. So hopefully they'll, they'll get on the field, they'll, they'll get after it. And then, of course, we have our middle school field trips that are, that are coming up. Really that first, first week in May is when, when most, all of those are. Some of those are the second week there. And they're going to, I didn't put it on there, but it doesn't matter. They're going all over the place. We've got one group going to Twin Pines, one group going to Fantastic Caverns. I think the eighth grade's going to the IMAX and somebody's going to Mammoth. I think fifth grade's going to Mammoth. So on the 6th, we have the eighth grade that's going to go tour the high school like they always do. And then on the 7th of May, we have the fourth and the eighth grade that will be doing Transition Day. So the eighth grade will bump up to the high school. Fourth grade will bump up for part of the day to the middle school. We'll go through lunch, recess, meet the teachers, tour the building, do all of that, get all of that taken care of. So they kind of have an idea of at least the layout of the building and what it's like to go through lunch. Because that's, that's usually kind of, that's new for them. And as far as the eighth grade, I'm pretty sure they'll be up there just all day, right?
Yes.
Going through the, the building.
Through their classroom.
Yep, okay.
Good luck with that.
On the 9th, we have a field day scheduled. We'll have the fifth and sixth grade for part of the day and then we'll all eat lunch together and then in the afternoon, the seventh and eighth grade will have a field day down at the football field. And we'll just have games set up and it'll just be a fun day for them. And then the last day of school, we plan on having the talent show as well as the final character traits assembly on that day. So some celebrations that we've had, obviously the pep assembly, the spring social. On our PD Day, our teachers presented by grade level and we're seeing some very positive results from our RTI. And so I just thought I would mention that. Hopefully we will have some, some data to share with you, probably some iReady data to share. But we're in the process of figuring out how we're going to collect data next year now that we kind of have our plans in place. And so, but after speaking with our Tier Three interventionists, they're seeing some really positive results from what we're doing with our Tier One, which is our normal classroom instruction. And then our Tier Two, which is that extra help that we get immediately if a kid doesn't get the classroom instruction. So that's what we've been working on is our, our Tier Two. And we've been doing that by grade level, by grade level teams. And so we all, each grade level shared what they were doing. And it's just really neat to see how far we've come in a year with our RTI stuff. And so I see positive things, I hear a lot of positive things from them. And so, yeah, that's, that's all good stuff. We also have teachers observing teachers at the middle school. That's something that we did last year and we'll continue to do that. Our teachers are probably one of our biggest, well, not probably, they are our biggest resource. And so if we can get into each other's classroom and we're doing that, hopefully we can learn from each other. And that's the idea there. So do you guys have any questions for me? Thanks.
I'd say anybody's welcome out there to Noblet on the 17th.
Oh, yeah. The more the merrier. So come on out and join us.
Probably enjoy that.
All right. I first started here, Mac. I went out there on that, that volunteering trip, you know. Before that, we had a group that we had to go back with the bus to get because they were a little...
I didn't read the map, everyone.
Yeah, that wasn't where I was. I was thinking it was going to be on the trails and stuff, but not the case. Just like the other buildings, we have tons of stuff going on right now. We're in the middle of our iReady testing, our final test for the year. We're excited about those results. They're looking good and that's, that's what we're wanting. We piled a couple of programs and to boost our reading. And we are seeing improvements in that, our reading scores, so we're excited about those things. Just this week, recognized our final teacher, proud Tuesday teacher for this year is Julie Kelly, very deserving teacher. Rise and Shine Assembly last Friday, we recognized spelling bee winners. Also our little student, our little elementary student athletes and they get a kick out of that because at the same time, we bring in our high school athletes and they get to see some of the kids that may be an A-plus tutor or someone they see play baseball or tennis or whatever, any spring sports. Because we use, we bring those kids in for fall, winter and spring as well. So anyway, that's, that's a big thing. The kids, kids enjoy that and I'll scribble notes on here as I sit in here. Over on upcoming events, you'll see, I've got Secretary's Day, Secretary's Day first thing on there. Because we all know this, this, this school don't click without our secretaries. So and we can be out of the building, teachers out of the building, we can make it work. We need our secretaries.
Give the board secretary.
That is the sad. Anyway. Field trips. We take one per grade level. Teachers do a great job connecting that with the, turning it into an educational field trip. We go up to Fantastic Caverns, Small and Cave, some really neat field trips that we go on and it's a great time for the kids. And some of these kids, they act like we're, we're traveling out of the country because they don't get to do these types of things. We appreciate that very much. Park days, which has our reward system for attendance or whatever it may be or, or, you know, also they're finishing the map test, which the map tests are coming up 23rd through 25th. We're doing a lot of prep work for that. It's a big thing. We have our kindergarten and preschool screenings, the 30th to the 2nd. Nation kindergarten graduation coming up, retirement reception. We have a lot of things going on, but we're going to recognize our, our teachers a different week as well. We're going to go, the, the actual teacher in Nurse Appreciation Week is the 6th through 10th. We're going to do that the week before and catch both of those and try to make a big week out of that for our teachers, for our appreciation. Because by the time we come to the end of the year in elementary, they've... They're ready, they're ready for a break there. A couple of things, my elementary leadership team put out their final newsletter the other day. They've worked hard on that, they do a good job. Do you guys get a copy of those through the email, by the way? Do we send those out?
We need to do that.
We need to do that. That's, those kids work hard on it.
Yeah.
And that's something we need to make sure we follow up. It's, it's a good thing. And, you know, and the elementary kids, that's, that's a big thing to them, stuff like that. Just like the Secretary's Day, Principal's Day and Assistant Principal's Day, they, they bring cards and, you know, they wait for your reaction. They love that. And this, this work that they, they put into those types of things is good. And it's neat to see a little journalism group get started because that's a big part of moving into middle school and high school. Any questions for me about any of this? All right.
Thank you, Chris.
I don't have a fancy form, so I laid in the middle of your table. I created my own this month of everything going on in the world of special ed. Excuse me. I tried to align mine maybe a little bit different because what I do in my world is different from what the buildings do. But what we're doing in special ed that aligns to our CSIP goals and plans. So the first box, I've just kind of outlined what our current placement is in special education. We have 172 students that we're currently serving that are eligible. Those broken down, our early childhood special ed, we have eight students and 164 that are K through 12. We do have three students that are in MSSD at the state school at West Plains. Those do not count in our overall child count for our district, but we do have to pay local tax effort to state school for those three students. There are a little spring for residents. Transfers in this year, and hopefully we don't receive any more this late in the game, but we've had 37 students that had special education services move into our district this year and 36 that have moved out. We've had 103 to date, 103 special education referrals are in process of evaluating 103 students. On the 504 side of my job, those are students that have medical conditions or conditions that limit a major life function and require some sort of accommodations at school. And we currently have 73 students district-wide that have plans, 504 plans that provide them accommodations. The other areas, and I'm not going to read all those to you, but those are things that we're doing in special ed that align to our CSIP goals, like for instructional programs. The things that we're doing is we make sure that our students' IEP goals that are aligned to our curriculum. We do transition planning for our students who are 15 plus years old to create a program for them. We help develop goals and make sure they're enrolled in the, in the courses that they need to achieve their post-secondary plan. We also do the iReady assessments. Special education also has a different assessment component called Dynamic Learning Maps and these are for students with most severe disabilities. They do a different assessment, map assessment or EOC assessment than other students do. So we create their IEP around the Dynamic Learning Maps or their assessment where they have to meet certain benchmarks through their IEP cycles and, and then they're assessed on a different program than map or EOC. And then we also have our related services for instructional programs like OTPT, speech language, behavior therapy, counseling services. Those services are provided to students in addition to their special education services because they require those to make progress on their IEP goals. And then for instructional staff, we do a lot of professional development through special education. Some of the things that we, you know, do are similar to what building levels do. In addition, most of our staff take training annually on writing a quality IEP, what quality evaluations are. We have several that go through letters training, myself included. We, and my staff, we do a lot of professional development to how to improve things for our students. Facilities wise, I know how it's written in our CSIP goals. We have started in the past two years and then again this year. If a building level is using a certain curriculum, we want to implement that same curriculum in the special education classroom as well, just so they have, when they're going from room to room, that continuity of what they see in the classroom, they're seeing in our classrooms as well. Some of that, the specially designed instruction piece of that, it's the same curriculum, but we make modifications or accommodations or maybe work at a different level that the student needs, but it is the same overall curriculum. And then you guys know with the movement with the trailers, with the CTE programs, that we're hoping to improve that process for our students with special needs. Stakeholder involvement, and this is something that I, I think we do a really good job at on the IEP side of things. We probably have more parent meetings than a lot of other buildings. We probably have more parent meetings than a lot of other buildings. I know yesterday, I think I had six meetings, and I think that we do a very good job of including our parents in our meetings. District-wide, this year to date, I have less than ten parents who have not participated in any sort of meeting for their children, and that's pretty good, considering where it was whenever we first started. But we really do have a lot of parent involvement and, and participation. They usually leave feeling like they've had a voice, or that they've been welcomed to the meeting, and that their input matters. Something that, that we are forming is a stronger connections committee. I wrote a grant a few months ago, and it is tentatively officially approved, I guess is the status that we're at right now, Dr. Spencer. I think we've been told that we.
Will be official.
That we will be officially approved. We had to make one small amendment, but I had wrote a grant called a Stronger Connections Community Grant for $400,000, and we were approved for our district for that, which is very exciting. It's money's to be spent over the next, it's supposed to be three years, including this year, but the following two years to help support things like mental health needs for our students. And part of that is that we have to have stakeholder input and community connectivity in the programs that we're offering to our students that help with like mental health needs, or, or needs overall in the school district. So that was a, a pretty big award to, to get for, I know, grant-wise, what we were looking at was increasing our mental health providers that we have. Currently, we have Missy Leedy, who's been booked up since the first day she's been here, I think, and we know that that's a, a great need for us. And we're also hoping, I know that needs-wise, when I talk to our committee, our third assessment committee, on things that we could do for our students, and behavior seems to be an increasing concern, is using a behavior analyst district-wide. And then, grant-wise, it'll be a couple of year position, because it, when the money's gone, the person's gone, but someone that can help our classroom teachers, or even individual students with those strong behaviors that we're seeing in classrooms, or more increasingly, hard behaviors to deal with. So having some personnel that maybe help and train us as well on how we would deal with situations like that, so. And then, some professional development and supply money for some other programs and things, is what that grant involved. We're also part of the Portrait of the Graduate Committee, and so I know I've talked in the past about the advisory panel. Few of that I have saw know that we participated in the Missouri Advocacy Day, where special education was at the Capitol last week, and Willis Springs School was recognized on the House floor, we were announced, and it was really a neat thing for Travis Smith to announce the, the Willis Springs School District. And then, after we were announced, David Evans actually came off of the floor and sought our group out and spoke to us, and what he was approaching me about wasn't about special education, it was because our people have been calling him and, and contacting him, and things that we, that we've had requests of our legislators for, like funding for CTE programs, and he knows Willis Springs, and he knows us by name, and he sought us out to ask us questions. And I thought that was really powerful to know that they know us, and they know our names, and, and it's because that we, that we're doing good things, and that we're, we're contacting them, so it was a, it was neat for, for that to occur. And then, I'm also a mentor for new special ed directors through the state as well, through the AMP Committee, so that's another way that we have stakeholder involvement and governance. That CSIP goal that we have attended, and I know our building principals attended with me, training on, LEA training, on how to be the local education authority meetings, and all the building principals attended that. We do bi-weekly staffing meetings with all special education staff to talk about processes and, and compliance. The Win Team meetings were started back up this year in the elementary, and those have been very beneficial, where we talk about students and their specific needs or concerns, evaluations, that we're part of, well, and I, I am particularly the Southeast Missouri Lace, which is the local area special education administrators group, I'm the president-elect of that committee, and also on the finance and new director committee for the MoCase Board, so. My report looked different this month, because I felt I was too vague all along, but any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
First of all, thank you for this, because I, it helps me understand some things.
Okay.
This is really good, so I appreciate that.
It may not look much different every month, because I think, like how we align to our CSIP goals, like these programs are kind of how they are, the content on the first box might change, but.
And then the grant, that's exciting, that's, that's great. I have a couple of questions up here.
Sure.
On the 504, the seventy-three.
Yes.
Is that part of the one seventy-two, or is that separate?
It's separate.
Okay. And then, it says a hundred and three referrals, is that, have we tested that many, or?
We are, we have either got the evaluation completed or in the process of that many.
Okay. So do we, do we know yet how many of those have been identified?
Um, the, I think at last month's meeting, we had around eighty-some, I believe, if I remember correctly, I didn't, I think we had about eighty-two that we were in the process of, and over half had met eligibility from what we were at last month. Next month, we're, by May meeting, we should have all evaluations completed for the year, and I can give you a specific number on how many out of the referrals qualified and didn't. But we're well over, what we're looking at, we're well over on our evaluations and reevaluations, well over half have met eligibility. I know we started our year, special ed placement-wise, K-12, and this didn't, this included our December one count, I think our numbers were at like one fifty-two, one fifty-four, and we're at one seventy-two at this point, so our numbers have increased throughout the year. Some of that is with kids that have moved in, and kids have moved out, and some of it's from the evaluation referrals that we've received, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our student representative is not here tonight, but he did send a video report. It is a Wednesday night, I'll just start before he even makes his, his point here, and it's a valid one. Colton is at church tonight, and we definitely respect that as a district. We don't like to have activities on Wednesday nights, we don't like to have board meetings on Wednesday nights, but sometimes life gives us a, a window that we have to squeeze into. So I'll just acknowledge his, his complaint before he starts, that yes, this is on Wednesday night, and no, we don't, we don't like to do that, but it's sometimes, that's just what we have to do. So here's Colton with his student report.
Good evening, everyone. I am so sorry that I cannot make it there tonight. However, I am always occupied on Wednesday nights. So again, I'm so sorry I couldn't be there, but that being said, there's a lot to cover. I'm just going to do my report, and a little bit of a different report this time. So we're going to start things off right inside the high school. Let's talk about some sports. Spring sports are a full swing, and all of them are good to be doing. I've not been able to talk individually, or one-on-one with specific sports, but everything that I have heard all around, it appears that all of our spring sports teams are doing. FPLA has been really busy this month, as they've been preparing to head to the state leadership conference, and prepared to compete, hopefully, in a spot at the national leadership conference. A lot of preparation goes into those contests, so we wish everyone in FPLA best of luck as they go to the state conference. Moving on to EFA, EFA is also preparing for their state competition, as seventeen qualified for the state contest. King Spence will also be attending the state conference, so she placed first at District three. During March, Colton Stolba was elected as the Area Thirteen President, which was a huge deal to all of us at the Willis Springs State Department. So congratulations. Moving on to SCC LA, SCC LA has just returned from their state conference, where Kayla Pendergrass placed fourth in her category. Kayla did the Veterans Day Assembly back in the fall, and that placed in the category of chapter service project. Coming up, April twenty-first, April twenty-second, Madison Bay and Kayla Pendergrass will both be attending their regional office. Jumping down to the middle school, I'm sure Dr. Johnson has already hit on some of this, but if not, recently, the Highway Patrol did give the Don't Mess with Me presentation to all the students, so I'm sure that was a great presentation, a lot of information to be learned there. Elementary school, Mr. Rogers might have also talked about this as well, but children's author, Jeff Stidnapp, came down and talked to the students, and what I heard, they had a great time, talking a lot about him being an author and all of his sports. Elementary and middle school students both participated in the Art Around Town event at MSUS Plains, which from what I saw and heard, went really successful, so congratulations to that. Moving on to our final, and typically, longest piece, comments and concerns in the district. First of all, I know you guys are probably eager to hear about the phone policy, but I'm going to say it back first. Number one, students are upset about a lot of things being blocked. But first of all, we're all upset about the phones being taken away, however, when we get on the Chromebooks, it feels like a lot of students are upset that nothing can be done, other than Gmail, and that's a bad thing. So I'm not sure if there's much that can be done there, however, has done one of the biggest concerns, all more students. Number two, the reason I'm not there tonight, events on Wednesday nights. Now, I understand, and I'm sure most of the other people understand that, sometimes Wednesday nights are the only nights available. However, since the first week of January, nearly forty percent of the Wednesdays have been occupied by an event. This is just a stat that I found, and a lot of people, and I know the community as well, and some of the student body, but it's just not a fan of having events on Wednesday nights, especially because of church. Moving on to what you've all been waiting for, the phone policy. So, from my personal perspective, and everyone's perspective, we see the pros, we see the cons. So first, we'll talk about the pros, get the good out of it. Students communicate a lot more and are forced to talk to each other, which a lot of us have seen as a great thing. See, I've seen more engaging conversations than normal, I've seen a lot of people actually talking more than normal. Teachers may not be fans of that as much, but it is really nice to see people just communicate in person. However, moving on to the cons, a lot of these, I can understand, and these all kick and stress, by the way, so let me just jump right away. The biggest thing is not being able to do anything in classes that needs to be done, whether it be media classes, yearbook, graphic design, etc. Corbin Lowe says that I used to use it to find ideas for projects at woodshop, but I can't anymore. Adam Martin also said that I have found it very hard to do anything for the yearbook or graphic design. Being a yearbook student myself, we always send my closest pictures, and we have to get them from our phone, or whether it's from Facebook, or places that we need to get things, or we need to find ideas as well, we've not been able to send anything to Mr. Wilson. I have to go through a much longer process just to get pictures for the yearbook. Brady Frigga says that I think we should be able to use them during lunch and bare time, just for a break. And I know a lot of other students, they think that it should at least be allowed during classes, or during lunch. I mean, there's not much else that's going on during that period. A lot of us feel like, a lot of students. An entire outright ban may not be a good decision. Matty Feldman says, it's definitely not as bad as I thought it would be. I see where the administration is coming from, but I also think that they should have tried different alternatives, rather than banning it altogether. Some of us are genuine adults, and we have to do adult things, which are hard to do when we're at school, without phones, from seven fifty to three fifteen. Some students also have jobs straight after school, so it can be difficult for the adult students to do adult things. Not everyone has parents who call the doctor office, which I can also see a perspective on that as well. A lot of times, you may have to communicate with your parents, other things outside of school. Now with the phone pouch, I know you can have a pouch, and you can deal with situations like this, but from what I've heard, there have not been hardly any people that have decided to purchase a phone pouch. Now, is that a personal choice? Yes, but most students have not wanted to keep their phone in the pouch. It kind of feels more like a restriction. Also, with cell phone pouch, it has changed since last year. I'm sure you guys might have seen it by now, but it is no longer a great magnet or rectangle with a diaper pouch. It does still serve its purpose, and it keeps you still in the pouch, but it feels like it is a little more of the other pouch. It feels like some students could bother with it more than others. And the way I see it is almost like the entire example of sitting at a plate of marshmallows right out in front of a kid, telling the kid, don't eat the marshmallow. Simple as that. But of course, it's important that the kid wants to do it, the kid's going to think about this marshmallow even more, don't eat the marshmallow even more. In the same way, I think it's almost like that cell phone as well. You tell us to not be on the cell phone, and absolutely get rid of it, and it's almost like students have become sneakier, or more strict about it, and just want to think about their cell phone even more. And honestly, I don't know if it has helped that much. If you want my honest opinion, I think I still get the same amount of work done this week. Instead, I might be thinking about my phone more than I was with my phone in my actual pocket. So the phone policy has definitely had its goods, but it's also had its bads. It might just be a thing that we're getting used to, otherwise, a lot of students are not the happiest of those. And from a happy perspective, I can completely understand. It's just a lot to take in, but there might be things that can be done, there might not, I'm not sure. That is everything. And I believe I have covered everything, so once again, thank you all very much. So sorry I couldn't be there. Hopefully, you guys have a great rest of your night. Thank you.
Here's your student representative report. He did a good job. He always does.
All right. I guess we'll move on to the Interact Club kids, ladies here.
So I am not Mrs. Siler, in charge of the Interact Club. She couldn't be here tonight, but she gave some information to read. And then, we've got Matty Corr and Sophia Barrett here to tell you more about it. Interact Club is a Rotary-sponsored service club that gives young people an opportunity to participate in fun and meaningful service projects while developing leadership skills and meeting new friends. The basic principle of the Rotary Interact is to help others. The Interact motto is service above self. All you need to join the Interact Club is a servant's heart and three dollars. We do a variety of community service projects during the school year. Willis Springs Interact Club has twenty-five student members this year. So far in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Interact members have given three hundred and nine hours of their time to community projects. Next week, eight Interact members will travel to Jefferson City for Student Government Day. Students will get to tour the state Capitol, the Supreme Court, and the governor's mansion. Students will also attend a legislative committee hearing, have lunch at the Capitol, where Supreme Court Justice Mary Russell will be the guest speaker. So that's a little bit about Interact, and we'll let these ladies tell you some more.
We pack weekend food bags every week, so every Friday, or whenever the last day of the week is, we send them home with students in our district. And we've got one hundred five food bags every week.
So this year, we of course did our annual Thanksgiving food drive. We collaborated with the Beta Club this year, which is something new. Beta's a new club to our school, and we've been able to partner up with this and a few other things, I believe. And we always put together these baskets, basically to provide families with just ingredients so they can cook a traditional Thanksgiving meal, if they, even if they wouldn't otherwise be able to afford it.
Traktion was a workshop in St. Louis we went to. It promoted safe driving habits, and it encouraged leadership and teamwork. It educated all of us, so we all had different groups. And the entire premise of the workshop was to encourage you to do good in your community.
So back to school, we did a lot. We were involved with a lot of things that were going on with back-to-school things. We handed out hygiene kits from Convoy of Hope to students in our district, who again, otherwise might not be able to afford them. We gave out cereal boxes to families of students in our districts, and we also advertised the Haggis School Interact Club to incoming students, so that was a really great opportunity for us to, you know, kind of get some recruitment going, get some, generate some interest. And we of course assisted the Rotary Club. We like to partner with them on a lot of things, because the club is Rotary-sponsored. And we also made cotton candy that we got to hand out at this back-to-school event.
Members of Interact volunteered to help with the Rotary radio auction. So we ran the live bids to the broadcasters who owned the phones, and we helped keep it efficient, and we made sure it ran smoothly.
And so, we like to partner with Munch on a lot of things as well, so we, again, got to do that this year. We got to go and pack food bags for low-income families, and we also help store bags on shelves for easy distribution, so it kind of makes the days when they're handing out bags a little bit smoother.
Recently, we participated in Change for Change, where students in our district donated their loose change, or just money, and we collected it in all three schools, and then we donated it to schoolchildren in Uganda, through the Fields of Dreams Uganda.
And I believe the elementary won that, they did absolutely incredible, blew the other two schools out of the water, so props to elementary. And then, this year, just a couple of weekends ago, we partnered with the Lions Club to help out at the Easter egg hunt. The kids, I didn't need to go and help out with this one, but the students who did got to help spread Easter eggs and assist with setup, and then they also got to help supervise children, so they got to, you know, interact with them on a really fun day for those kids. Thank you. I guess that's it. Does anyone have any questions? We went through a lot really fast, so.
How does somebody become a part of the club? Is there requirements, or is there, you just volunteer?
There's three-dollar dues, and other than that, you just pay those, and pretty much anyone can join. It's a really great opportunity. I joined it sophomore year. I joined it sophomore year because I knew I wanted to join NHS my junior year, and there's a community service hours requirement. And it's just been an absolute blast. I really had no idea before that point how to get involved in the community. And Interact really helped me get some of those opportunities, so it's been a really great experience.
How many members you got?
Twenty-five, yeah.
Really? Wow.
It's, I think it's grown from last year, so.
Yeah, last year we only had like eighteen or twenty.
Yeah, that sounds right, so. Got new members this year. We got a pretty small senior group graduating this year, so they won't be losing too many and hopefully a lot of incoming freshmen coming in, so.
You probably hit your best time down in lunch, didn't you?
It's always a blast to go out there.
You guys are a big help.
We're always glad to help. We have some pretty great hosts too, so.
Well, it was good. And kudos to Ms. Seiler for all her work and the work she does and sponsoring and helping. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Very good. Mr. James.
My turn.
You're up.
Well, thanks for having me. Marty, Dr. Spence asked me to come in. It's kind of our annual April. Just kind of a recap of what's going on in athletics right now, athletic department. And I guess April is a pretty fitting month to do it because it is our busiest month by far in the year. Fall, fall's a close second, but April is just a lot going on and pretty much activities every night. I did write down a couple of things I did want to say. I got to witness the signing day that you all talked about. And I don't know if you all saw that, pictures or anything, but it was very cool. And I was impressed and I thought the kids and parents really appreciated it, so that was really awesome. I've been to a lot of those with athletes over the years, and I always think it's really cool for our athletes. And I thought that was really neat for kids that are doing other things. And I just thought that was great. Anyway, like I said, spring sports, you guys, numerous people have said it there, to say the least, in full swing. This time of year, being outdoors athletics is a big operation. It requires a ton of help, a ton of cooperation and flexibility. And it's quite frustrating to be, to be honest with you, sometimes when trying to coordinate a lot of things and the weather doesn't cooperate and our kids aren't getting to play. You know, it's frustrating because, you know, coaches, you know, Coach Johnson knows like, "We want our kids to play, we don't want to practice every day." So it's a lot of work and frustrating this time of year. It takes a lot of people. It's a big operation. I'm just going to kind of talk a little bit about that with you all tonight, so. You know, it's a good idea. I know, you know, those of us who work in it every day, but it's just a good reminder that benefits of participating in sports and all other activities, like these young ladies were here tonight. You know, it's, those are really positive things that our kids need to be involved in. And we need support and keep working hard to provide those opportunities for them. You know, you can look online, you can Google and stuff will pop up. You can read all day long about the benefits of athletics for kids, or activities for kids. Just, just nothing too detailed, but a recent report done by the CDC found that youth who played sports had higher levels of self-esteem, social support, lower levels of depression and loneliness than their peers who didn't. Pretty basic, but that's important stuff. And that's, that's the kind of, that's why we do what we do. And, you know, we want to win and we want to do all that stuff. But that stuff right there is going to help our, our kids, you know, just have overall better quality of life and a better experience here while they're with us. So anyway, academics, athletics, and in all our activities we offer are very important. And we all will continue to work hard to provide these opportunities for our kids because we think that's what's best for the kids. Currently, right now, in the spring, we got a hundred and sixty-nine students participating in spring sports. Talked about it already, but that's pretty much an event every night in the month of April. We roll into May too, but April's definitely the busiest. It takes a ton of people to make our operation go. And when, you know, I'm trying to name drop a little bit and thank some people, but with doing that, I'll probably forget some people that help us. But, you know, as we come to the conclusion of another year, there's just a lot of people behind the scenes that make our athletic department go. And I just wanted to tell you all a little bit about them. So, before we get into that, I do, I did write a report. I've never done this before, but it's a pretty handy feature on my, my AD program. And I ran a report, and from August to May, we have scheduled four hundred and two events, which, you know, that makes sense why my phone rings nonstop, I'm always on the phone. I never have, there probably never is Saturday or Sunday where we're not working on something for the next week. And that's why, four hundred and two events. Twenty-five different teams. You know, of course, we're talking, you know, some of those are your JV, freshman varsity, you know, same team but different events. It's still games and it still takes people to run it. Still takes people to be there and, you know, for our kids to be able to do this stuff. So speaking for myself and our coaches, we just couldn't operate without these very important people. And, you know, no particular order, but Jenny Poor, Amanda Osborne, and Allison in the middle school, they're on the front line. Like, I mean, they're, they're the go-tos every day dealing with myself, our athletes and our coaches. And I'm sure they get annoyed with us at times and, you know, they got a lot going on to, you know, besides that, but they are, they are so awesome to have. And I just, I personally could not imagine doing my job without, without them. Jenny Hayward, she does a great job running our communication sites, getting information out. Just been awesome to have her this year. Our coaches really appreciate the work that she does to promote our athletes. If you ever, you know, I'm not on social media scrolling all the time like some people do, but if you have seen some of the stuff that her and Sabrina Lee, you know, a lot of these kids work on that too, but just some graphics that they put out. And I know our kids love that stuff. It's like, oh, it's my turn. Look, I'm up there, they love it, the coaches love it. And I've heard them bragging about it. They do hype videos. I mean, if you've seen some of those, I mean, really impressive stuff for Willow. Talked about Sabrina a little bit. Sabrina Lee works closely with the athletic department and communications department. A lot of behind the scene work from Sabrina. And, you know, many schools, I've talked to a lot of people that, that have reached out or I've been talking to other ADs, and they brag about our students and our live streaming. It's pretty cool. Not everybody does it, and the ones that do it don't do it as good as we do it. Of course, Mandy and, you know, Mandy and Jamie, they're, I bug them daily too, so I appreciate them. They're, I couldn't do my job without them. Love and Schwalum, Kenny Smith, and Tommy, Tommy Rothamitz. They stay on top of our transportation needs, best there is, hands down. I've worked with all of them for years. Just, they make our world so much easier. We don't have to worry about getting to ballgames, they make it happen. DeChandra Bean and her custodial staff, you don't take that for granted. Our facilities, old or new, they do a wonderful job. They take pride in what they do. Coaches work really closely with our custodians. They treat them as a part of the team as they should. There has not been a custodian that I haven't, you know, every custodian that takes care of our facilities, you know, we end up all being friends with them. And it's just, it's just very appreciative for her and her staff. And they support, they support our coaches and kids. We want them to have, you know, I've seen our coaches give our custodians, you know, coaching shirts, some polos and t-shirts. I mean, they're a part of it too. All the administrators, you all travel around supervising games. Coaches appreciate your support and being there, I promise you that. Real quick, Ethan Leedy, Vic, Brad Seiler and his students, Mike Bailey, Landon Clinton, Josh Owens, Randy Owens, Tiny White. Gosh, our new training facility is unreal. Our new softball field is awesome. If you haven't been down there, go check it out. You drive by there now and you're seeing the space that we've never used before, and it was awesome. Saturday, we hosted a high school softball tournament last weekend. And I just was, I just was very pleased with how that went and the facility that we have now to use. And gosh, we ran off an eighteen tournament and we were done by four, five o'clock in the afternoon. Willow Springs could never do that until now. It's great. And those guys made it happen. And they made it happen fast. I mean, I feel bad, I'm always calling, hey, you know, we got a game in March, and they made it happen. And the kids too, Brad Seiler's kids, that's an awesome thing that you guys have set up for those kids to be with Brad. Awesome. If you haven't seen it, go down and check it out. The dugouts, like I said, it's pretty impressive. So anyway, we got a lot going on in spring, so just real quick, I want to take much of your time, but just some quick highlights. I talked to some of our coaches and they, they sent me just some brief highlights. Golf, Coach Johnson, very pleased with his golf team. They recently hosted a meet and finished first, second, third, and fourth. Brady Altamont finished first. He told me they shot a three thirteen as a team. Best score they've ever had, or they've had in over ten years. And that's probably since Coach Johnson was actually on the team, I'm pretty sure. So we are anticipating a really special year with golf. You know, we might, we may even put a banner up for this team. They're really good and coaches excited. And they also won yesterday at Kabul. He told me that, texted me that last night. So they, I think they shot a three thirteen again, if I remember what he told me. So they won the Kabul meet yesterday. Good stuff. Boys tennis, Coach Cox reports the boys tennis team is off to a great start. They finished second at the Forsyth Tournament last weekend. Just briefly, he told me Will Clarkson got second place at the Lebanon Tournament. So we got some good, seems like we always have some good tennis players here. We got it going on again this spring. High school softball, Coach Bunch, he leads one of the best softball teams in southwest Missouri. They are currently eleven and three. They won the consolation bracket in the SCA Tournament, and they finished third in our own Willow Springs Tournament. See, that was a good tournament. I mean, there's some, there's some good teams here. They do a good job. I look for them to have a strong finish to the spring. They're a good team. If you haven't seen them, check them out. If you can, go down there when baseball and softball is playing and you can just bounce back and forth. And it's a pretty neat setup. I like going down there, checking them out. High school baseball, Coach Rogers and Coach Miller are very pleased with progress their team is showing. Currently four and seven. They beat Winona, Norwood, and Thayer. They've lost some games due to weather, working on rescheduling some of that. They played in the Hartville Tournament. They got, well, they played for third place in the Hartville Tournament, losing to a good Conway team, and that was last weekend, I believe. Just some individual stuff, I can't get much out of them. You know, Coach Rogers is pretty, pretty humble, but he did give me a stat sheet. And we had three, we have three players stuck out to me, they're batting over four hundred. And that's, I mean, I'm not a baseball guru, but I know that's pretty good. And that's Braxton, Caden, and Jace. They're batting well and, you know, just other kids are doing good, got some good pitching. Check them out. Anyway, the amount of work our coaches and players and parents have done to our field is awesome. Booster Field used to be one of the worst places to play in our area. That's coming from other coaches and ADs. They hate coming here, it's bad. Now it's one of the best. And that's because our coaches, players, parents, people got up there and got to work and made it happen. So proud of that. Boys and girls track and field. Track and field has, Coach Wagner told me that they've had thirty-five personal record or season best this season. Melana Wilson was the first girl since 2019 to medal at Glendale Girls Night Out on April fourth. Melana Wilson, Fortemere Dash, Mackenzie Collins Javelin, and Brianna Hand-Pogol. And one thing coming up that's kind of exciting for us, we, we don't have, and I'm sure I've talked to you guys before about, you know, facilities and this and that, but our, our track is not very good and we can't host a track meet. But on April fifteenth, we're hosting a track meet at Liberty with Liberty. So we're excited about that. Our coaches are gonna, I mean, we're, we're in the, in the middle of planning it, just like it's our home meet. Coach Wagner is kind of heading that up with, with the Liberty coach. So we're looking forward to that on April fifteenth. If you get a chance, anybody go watch them, cheer them on. And like I said, they're excited for that. Districts is fast approaching for our baseball, softball, track, tennis teams, golf. All that's fast approaching. And I really think we've got a shot at having a finishing strong with a lot of these teams. Middle school, I won't go everybody, but middle school is currently participating in track and field, softball, and baseball. And middle school got hit hard with rain. We've, somebody else talked about that, maybe John, but I feel bad for Coach Pitts and the middle school baseball, and Coach Collins with the middle school softball. They've lost a lot of ballgames and we're trying to, trying to plug them in. And we may have to throw those on the back of some high school games. May have to change some home games to away games. And we're just, bear with us, it may be a deal where we say, hey, you're playing tomorrow night? And it's just how it's going to have to be and just to try to get the kids some, get the kids some playing time. So hopefully in the next few weeks, we can make that happen. Anyway, and I know you all do, I see you guys out there, but any, but, you know, speaking for the coaches, they love, and I appreciate your support. Get out and watch them on a nice day if you get a chance. They're fun. If you get out there, you'll never regret watching the kids do what they like to do. I appreciate all you and the coaches and myself want to continue to encourage our kids to be involved in athletics or any other activity that helps them. You know, we, we feel an athletic department that that's going to make them better citizens and more successful in life, and that's why we're here. So the coaches and myself, we appreciate you all and thank you.
Thank you, Robert. I especially appreciate you recognizing all those behind the scenes that are, make things happen.
Yeah, and I probably forgot some people. It is so, it's so nice to have people like we do to make it, to make it work.
And administrators that are always at ballgames, that's a lot of ours. And then all the coaches that are involved. A lot of kids clearly are involved and give them some faith, so I appreciate that. All right, so.
Okay. Facility sponsorship was something that a board member wanted to discuss, and it's something that we've talked about in the past and thought it'd be a good idea to kind of revisit that a little bit as a, as a board. I've got policy KI for you, public solicitations, advertising in district facilities. It's, it's a couple of pages there and it goes into different, different types of activities and things. But basically, you can advertise on district facilities, but it's up to the board on what, and the administration on what is okay and what is not. We've talked as an administrative group today, and, you know, our big thing is, is number one goal, I put up there, is what's best for students. So, you know, on the, on the plus side, you're getting money into the district that you can improve facilities and make, make things better for kids. On the, on the other side, you've got somebody's logo in your school now. And so that's just kind of a discussion that you guys can have as a board on how far or how little we do as far as facility sponsorship. And it's a good thing that the athletic director is here tonight and he might want to chime in as well. But a lot of, a lot of this would really be athletic in nature because you're looking at, you know, ball fields and courts and athletic facilities is usually where this comes up. So there's your, there's your intro, and you can just discuss as much or little as you want to.
I'm always ready to talk about that.
We already have some in place already, right?
We do. Yes, and it's, we can, because it's in here. But we as an administrative group want to know from the board, like, how, how much you want of that? Or would you rather keep it kind of low key? Because it's pretty low key right now, we don't, we don't have the time.
But I guess my concern would be control of who's coming in and what's represented in our cert, in our district. That would be my main concern. And I think that the administration would probably evaluate each person. But would you, I mean, would, would you guys, you know, would it be an open slate? I mean, are you looking at treating any business as long as they hit this criteria? Are they treated equally? Or would you be able to have the, the ability to distinguish and decide what is represented in our school district?
Well, I think this gives us the, we have the ability to, to vet that to what we see as what's best for students. And clearly, there are some businesses and companies we wouldn't want to, to have sponsorship on our. And we would also be able to control how big or small the logo is and that kind of thing.
I do think it, I do think it has a positive impact as far as athletics goes on community involvement. You know, if whomever is sponsoring the scoreboards or whatever, you know, more than likely, that business and representatives from that business would be, you know, present at games. And I think it does give, I think it is an avenue for the community to be involved in things at school. I mean, that's a pro. And, you know, I don't know if that's good or bad for students. I don't know whether that's really not our decision, that's your guys', but anyway.
What are the cons and how? And how would this negatively affect students?
Well, as a board, I don't know that it would negatively affect students unless you're putting up something that, that would be. And that's, there's a little gray area there too. West Plains used to have a big golden arch on their, on their football field promoting, promoting fast food, which I enjoy very much. But I don't know that that's something we want to push for our students. That's kind of a gray, like, obviously a liquor store or something like that would, would not be in play. But there's some gray, there's some gray area. And that's, you know, as administrators, we could look at that. And there's also the, the visibility, you know, the, there is a good community tie there. But if you fill up, fill up your facility with, with advertising, does that negatively, does that take away from what you're there to, to watch?
Yeah, and I mean, you know, I'm a pretty strong advocate for this because of, you know, I, I mean, there's a reason why almost any stadium you go to at any level in any sport across the country has advertisement. I think we have a pretty good set of guidelines here that we can follow that does kind of keep us where we need to be as far as some of the advertisement and things like that. And I also think it opens the opportunity for some needed, desired revenue for some different programs and things that we have going on at the school. I also feel like too, that it can get overcrowded. So, you know, I don't think every square inch of the football field should have, you know, a logo on there. I think that, you know, somewhat keeping the, the beauty of our facilities can't be kind of overshadowed by someone who wants to be involved in sponsoring those things. So I think there can be a good balance in there of, you know, there's, when you look at Arrowhead Stadium or something like that, there's not an advertisement on every inch of the field. And so, kind of finding some, you know, a good spot to land on those. And I don't know what that answer is, is nine, nine advertisements or 20? But I think that we can work through some of that. And I just think it would be a really positive thing personally for our athletic programs and just the district in general.
Well, my first question is, one, we, right now we have the bank in the, in the gym, right? And is that it? Do we still have a football?
We have football, squirrel.
Okay, and that's what is that?
Uh, it's one of the banks. I can't remember off the top of my head.
It's probably the same.
Simmons Bank.
So we've met, to me, we've managed it real well so far. We've had a, we've had a need, a big need of something and we've got a sponsor or something. So to me, it's been managed well. So it doesn't look trashy to me. It doesn't look like they're overdoing it. To me, the first thing you've got to do is identify a need, okay? What do we need? Now, if we've got somebody, if the bank down here wants to donate and build us a new track, by gosh, I'm ready to sign up right now and build that track, okay? Or if somebody wants to put in a turf football field and they want to pay for it. I mean, I'm all for that. But I don't, to nitpick and say, oh, well, they paid $500 and we're gonna put a sign up and they give $1,000, we're gonna put another sign up. That to me gets to be a little bit trashy, a little bit. I, I just think it's got to be managed well. And then you've got the competition thing too. It's just kind of like, I know when I was the athletic director and we bought roses for senior night. And at the time, we had two flower shops, you know? Well, I'd go to one flower shop and I'd go to the other. And, you know, try to make sure that I was fair with the business in town. So you, you've got that too, whether it's the bank or, well, we got two funeral homes or we got two grocery stores or whatever it is. I think you have to, you know, you have to make the opportunity equal for whatever business you have. But I, I don't necessarily have a problem. I just think that it needs to be, we have to identify a need. I don't think there's, we should be done unless we really have a need for a big amount of money to do something.
And I do think it's a positive thing that managing it like he said, I don't know. And, and I do agree with what Matt said. I mean, you guys, especially you, have to be some kind of filter or vet for, you know, what's allowed. And, you know, we have a gym or do we have a sale barn? You know, every inch of the sale barn has somebody's. You know, every tire shop and every, you know, every title office and every, so you gotta, you gotta find some kind of.
But also, I mean, if you go to the, I mean, with the exception of FEMA buildings, if you go to any of the new gyms around there, look how many banks and hospitals and things that are advertised.
We went to a, a Mountain Home Football game a couple of years ago and they have like billboards on the other side of the stadium. And, and, and they're all both sides. And so, you know, I, I don't know what the happy me, the happy medium is.
Well, I like what, what Coach said about the gym, I think that's like, for instance, I know in our, our, the new gym, the, the padding, what do we call those, Robert?
So our, our mats, you know, our mats are, are old and they're, they're not in good shape to the point to where you run into them. There's not much cushion there. We need one. I priced them. They're high. I mean, so then, then you gotta decide if, do we want to just buy it? Because I want bear logos. I want WS bear logos. We can still do that or do we, you know, and I've talked to some people who actually were willing to buy us the mats, but they want their logo on it. So now you got your lo, their logo on each side of your gym floor. Is that, I don't have a problem with that, but it's just, you know, is that what we need to do or should we just buy it? I mean, that's kind of the dilemma you get into and that's a need and I don't know how to go about that.
And, and you guys were like mentioning the, like, I think you kind of talked like Mountain Grove was one of the main ones you're talking about, right? They've got the, you know, they've got their several.
They've got their floor.
Right, but that's a, that's also a brand new, big, brand new facility that they've built, that they've done this with. So to me, you know, that, that's a big difference between a facility that you've already got and you want to start putting advertising up in it. That's, I don't know, I just think you, it's a can of worms, I just hate to get too wild with it.
There's a need.
I think there, yeah, I think there's lots of needs because, I mean, at the end of the year, we look at the reports of what various programs and where, you know, the money is, has been spent and used and things like that. And, and different programs are not able to necessarily sustain themselves in some way. Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. So there, I mean, there, there's a need because there's a money deficit right, right out of the gate. I just think that, I mean, if, if someone wants to, within criteria and without kind of the overall vision of the district, I still think that if someone wants to implement funding into our programs, that it doesn't necessarily, where it makes sense, but it doesn't necessarily make sense to shove that away and just say, no, we're gonna do it ourselves.
I'd like to see maybe some ideas on how this could look and, and what revenue it might generate. Different options on where to put advertising.
And also, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's, I, it's hard for me to envision that without having something that exists.
It's kind of vague. I get that.
And also, I mean, we have all this, we have a social media presence now, like it or not. And, yeah, well, it is what it is. So, but I do think there would also be opportunities out there within the district for, you know, a bank or somebody to sponsor like FBLA, you know? FBLA sponsored by, you know, GW Food or whatever. And I do think there would be some opportunities for that. And, you know, I don't know the amount of money or the, or the guidelines for any of that, but I do think there would be some opportunities for that. Because, you know, there's a lot of, you see different things in different districts around where, you know, a feed store sponsors something for the FFA. And that's, they're on the T-shirts or they're on the social media post or whatever. And I think that's opportunities that we could, and again, it gets stakeholders involved. And, but again, we're just talking about ideas that you all have to implement.
Well, and right now, we do have Homecoming and Hoop Queen sponsored by Simmons Bank. I mean, so there, there is precedent.
Well, we, middle school student of the month.
It's there.
It's there, sure.
And we do have some ads on our line, it's true.
One of the biggest things we ever did was the fiddle houses. That was all, you had sponsorship levels on that. So, you may look at sponsorship, you know, if you want to do mats, I don't know what they are, you know? $1,000 will get you a mat or.
I did a, I just want to weigh in on the mats just a little bit there. I mean, I think there was a kid, wasn't there a kid injured during the ballgame because of one of those mats not on an opposite team there? So, I mean.
We're getting new mats.
Yeah, it's like, we don't need to look into sponsorship. We just need to fix it, you know?
That's just the thing, using example right now.
That's, that is a question though, is like, you know, we're gonna get mats. But do we help ourselves out by getting a sponsor for the mat and lowering our costs?
And I do, I mean, I, I agree with trying to do something, but I'm also kind of like Robert on the, like, the mats in the gym, I don't, you know, they kind of need to see, in my opinion, have our stuff on it here. You know what I mean?
No, I agree with that. And I would just make one more statement that, and I can't speak for Scott, but we have advertisement all up and down this road. And we're, we're not bashful about that we're trying to promote our business. I would be more than happy to shift those resources to put it here. Where we're still marketing and advertising our business, but it's a win-win. I, I would rather put it in the district than to give it to a sign company personally. And that's just me as a, one, one person.
And I do think there are other avenues too, like, I mean, I'll give you an example, my dad. My dad is old school to say the least. But like, paper programs that, like a softball game, there would be businesses sponsor those, you know? And it would be probably where they have it in their hand and this, this number is this kid and, you know? And I, I, there, there are some other things. But again, we, I, you know, that's not our stuff, we're just talking about it, so.
Well, I'll go back to what, what Mac said about maybe giving you some options and some revenue. And Robert and I can work on that and maybe come back to you next month with some, with some different options and what that might look like.
Yeah, maybe even a. Other schools, I see what.
And maybe even a generalized layout. Because I, I do agree with Coach. We don't want to, we don't want to, we don't want to, yeah. Yes, and so I, I think if we can get a, a visual of like, kind of what the field would look like or, or a basketball gym or, or wherever, our new softball fields, whatever that would look like with, you know, here's kind of proportionally what might make sense and how many of those we would be able to, you know, to utilize.
Yeah, some districts, I don't know if it's, I'm unable to speak at this, some districts, they utilize like a sponsorship board and you have different levels of sponsorship. Like a gold sponsorship and their name is here and a silver sponsorship. And depending on the amount of donation that you give, if you had just a centralized location for a board that had the sponsorships listed on it, might be a cleaner look.
Well, that's, we'll, we'll look and explore some of those options and, and bring those back.
I think I'd probably fall more in the line of, you know, something large than a lot of small.
Yeah. Well, I can promise you the administration doesn't want it to look trashy either. So whatever we should do, we would want it to look classy and still be a fair facility versus small. I'll bring back some, some ideas for you.
Alright.
Make some work for myself. Same, same, Mayor Jim. Alright, health insurance update, just to give you guys, we talked about this in the finance committee meeting, but just wanted to update you. We'll talk about this more in May when we look at the budget and kind of give you some, some early returns on the budget. But again, we are part of the mask consortium. That's not the correct acronym. Mandy looked it up. I guessed on that and I was close, but you remember what that acronym actually was? Should pull it up, but that's not exactly right. But it's the Mask Consortium. It's required by the group that all employees opt in for insurance purposes, so all our employees are part of the consortium. It is the Missouri Affiliated School Consortium. So I guessed associated, it was actually affiliated, so you can ding me for that. This allows us to keep the best prices possible because we're in this consortium. For as long as I can remember, we had a cap at 7% and we raised it 7% for, since the beginning of our consortium, probably. This year, we will, the only, the increase will be 2%. And that, that amounts to about $12 a month. So, much better increase. So we're happy about that. There was a lot of behind the scenes stuff that went on, some, some options and some threats made to Cox. But when that happens, sometimes things go the right way. So 2% will be the increase. What you'll need to think about as a board, and we'll talk about this again in May when we talk about the budget. But as far as employee health insurance, we can keep the district portion at 469 of the 60, of 645 or we can increase. As of now, the employee contribution would be 176 on the base plan.
With the 2% or without the 2%?
With, it'd be 176.
And it's $12 in, or monthly?
Yes, yes. So, that's something we'll talk about more and we can consider. But hopefully, you know, we can look at that and probably help our employees out by covering that, that, that small raise. So that's some good news from the health insurance world, which is, which is rare.
Was that all, was that all, was in?
No, that's just for your information tonight. But we'll, it will be in your packet for, for next month when we're gonna do something about it. Non-resident tuition rate, we do this, this time every year. We set, so if a student wants to come to our school, they can pay a tuition rate and, and come to our school for $7,000. Where this really comes into play is the rural schools that send students to us. They're on the hook for their tuition, so they pay us that tuition. So if a student from Richards comes to Willow, we get that $7,000 from the Richards School District. We could go up in that, but by keeping it at 7,000, it makes us more attractive to the rural schools to send their students to us. And that way, they don't spend as much of their budget on their students. And we like for them to be supportive of sending their students to, to Willow. So my recommendation would be with, that we stay at $7,000 for FY '25.
This seem like too that we're in the middle of the pack of the.
We are, yeah.
It's still considerably less than what it costs to educate, is that right?
Yes, I mean, if, and they've got a calculator on Desi. I forgot the exact number, but we could go up a couple thousand and still be, and still be very within our rights to do that.
And it costs to educate, so we're.
So we want it though, yeah.
It's not a profit.
No, but it's, we want our, we want students here because that drives up the ADA and that helps, that helps more than the tuition would help. Any questions about that? Okay, policy revisions. Policy committee met and I appreciate everybody on that committee. It was a lot. And we reviewed all of those policies that are up on the screen. Half, and here they are, if you want the physical copy of them. Half of them are marijuana related. So, MSBA's, so when they, when they legalized marijuana, MSBA went back through all of our policies and basically made revisions in our policies to reflect that just because it's legal outside the school does not mean that it's legal inside the school. We still keep all of the, the rights that we have as a district to prohibit that on grounds. So, half of those policies just revolve around marijuana regulations. The rest, GCPB are resignations. And remember, we had this chat about employees that broke contract. And the decision of the board was to just take out those penalties and just say, if you, you either take your contract or if you break your contract, then we can, we can hold you to the contract that you've already signed or we release you. We're not gonna, we're not gonna go through the whole penalty game because that was just kind of a, the board felt like that was just an extra loop that, that really didn't need to be there. Though, the next, on the next bullet, IGAB and the others, those are all state reading plans and Senate Bill 681. Those are all mandatory, that have to be there. We do a student reading plan now and, and that just changed that to reflect what we're, what we're already doing. ACA is sexual harassment. IND, Holocaust Education Week. Gives a week out of the year that, that the school district covers the Holocaust. Doesn't have to be the whole week, just that we do need to teach the Holocaust in school. JFB is the student representative to the board, that's a new policy to reflect that we do have a student representative, as you heard from him earlier today, to the board. And then the others, IGCD, and, uh, the companion, our virtual learning, that don't need to be there anymore, um, those were COVID, virtual learning, things, policies that just don't need to be there anymore. ILAP is literacy, that's removed because of outdated, because of Senate Bill 60, 681, that updates the new statute, so, that's the Cliff Notes version of all those policies, and those that you, if you were on the committee, if you want to chime in on anything else, feel free.
Yeah, a lot of it was pretty standard, I mean, like you say, some things we couldn't change, just recommend a lot of wording changes, you know, nothing real different to.
It cleans up a lot of stuff, so that hopefully, we won't have a big policy dump in the, in the near future.
I've got some questions.
Okay.
On the policies. The student alcohol and drug testing policies, are they, um, it was my understanding that that was done for extracurriculars?
Yes.
Is that changing now to where it's, there's a lot of reasonable suspicion talking that, is that changing to where if a student is under suspicion?
Which policy number is that, Matt?
It's going to be JFCI-2AP.
I remember talking about that, that we, we decided to, if it was suspected, then it was the right.
Yeah, there we go.
Right, so that's, that's a considerable change to procedure or not? Has that been the standard practice?
We, we have random drug tests.
Right, but I think what this policy is, is allowing is for administration that has reasonable suspicion of that somebody's under drug use to be able to drug test a student that's not part of that policy. Is that correct?
We can't, we can't, we can't drug test them, but we will be able to, so, we will be able to, to take discipline on that student. So, a drug or alcohol test is not necessary to discipline a student when there is evidence that the student is under the influence. So, we're not saying we have to test them, we're just saying, you're clearly under the influence, so you're going home.
Right, so these policies don't give the school district the right to test students that aren't part of extracurricular activities?
That's still parental, we have to have parental consent for that.
The other thing that I was curious about was the, um, in these policies, it says that the, uh, some attorneys disagree with what's going on, and to consult the district's private attorney with these policies, is that, have we taken those measures?
This is from, I mean, Susan Goldhammer is, she's went over all of this, so.
I mean, the policies come from them, and they're telling us to consult.
Which policy are you?
I'm referring to JFCI-2-AP.
Okay, sorry, there's just a huge stack, and I've.
I understand, I, I read through them.
Yeah. Well, some heads up might have been nice, so I got to look that up beforehand.
Get what?
You know, there's a lot, just saying.
JFCI.
JFCI-2, and then JFCI-2 also requests professional training for reasonable suspicion for administrators.
Which one are you asking about now?
I'm asking about JFCI, let me see, uh, let me pull them up, check them here. You got it pulled up?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's under the Marijuana Selection right here, or Section right here. It says, MSBA recommends that districts provide professional training to its employees and administrators, school resource officers, nurses, um, and then that, please consult the district's private attorney prior to adopting this policy's language.
Yeah.
Because some attorneys agree with this approach. So there, I, I guess what I'm saying is, it doesn't appear that there's consensus on what's going on there, they're recommending us in our policy to seek additional training and some guidance from outside sources, so.
The training is so that we would be able to identify somebody who might be under that, and we've checked into that.
I agree with that.
We've not been able to get anything scheduled yet, there are very few groups out there that can provide that training, and, and we've checked into it, and it's something that we would like to get done if we can get it worked out.
Right, right, so we're continuing to being on a policy, that there's just nothing there right now that allows that.
Fortunately, we do have an SRO that, that can, and it does have training in doing that, and so that's kind of where, that would be my first go-to in a situation like this, is.
I guess that's my overall question, is what are we doing to do this?
Our, our SRO and our nurses are our go-tos, because they have.
So if, if we approve this policy and you have reasonable suspicion, you're going to utilize the SRO and the nurses in order to.
Yes.
To pull that off.
Yes, we would like to get some of that training, but as of yet, we've not been able to find somebody who can provide it and get it scheduled.
Okay. That can't be announced.
I think.
Could, but.
I think there are, I don't know if our people.
Instructor.
They could, they could tell us about it, but I don't know if that would give any kind of certified training, so to speak.
That makes sense.
But, yeah, but we have inquired about it, actually, Susan Goldhammer had recommended somebody to do it, and the communication process has taken a, a long time.
Okay.
But we are, we have been pursuing that.
Okay, I appreciate that, that's what I want to know before I.
Thank you.
And, uh, you're talking about the one where they're suggesting we consult our private attorney?
Correct.
And that is in relation to the student, I believe, that has a medical marijuana card, and, uh, they're saying that we can still discipline them for coming to school impaired, if we feel like they're impaired, but apparently, you know, it's not hard to believe, there are some attorneys that believe that if they have a medical marijuana card, that they're still eligible to come, should still be eligible to come to school.
We would not take that, okay?
And so, yeah, so that's where there's all, probably going to be more than one set of litigations in the courts that look at that, that I don't think that's a done deal.
Right, well, I mean, it's, it's a new law, and it's a new thing that everybody's experiencing, and clearly, there's, you know, there's difference of opinion on there, and I just want to make sure, before we approve this stuff, that we have all of our ducks in a row, and that.
Yeah, I don't see it opening us up to anything.
Yeah.
Until, until it happens.
Any other policy questions?
Uh, no, I think that's it.
You got them all?
Yeah.
Last thing I have is Senior Project Night, Thursday, April 25th, presentations begin at four. The Community Showcase, that's always a lot of fun, that'll be set up in the Bears' Den for public viewing from 3:30 to 5:00 on the day of presentation, so, come a little early if you can, and walk through and ask the kids about what they've done with their projects. If you've not signed up to judge and you want to, Mrs. Wilson's email is on the screen there, send her an email, and she will get you signed up. You can pick your own, or you can give her a timeframe that you'd like to judge, and she can do it for you, but we'd certainly like to see all of you there on Senior Project Night, that's one of my favorite nights of the year, without a doubt.
All right, comments from our guest?
They've been trained.
This is your chance. All right, then, we'll move on to items for action. On the non-resident tuition rate, I would, uh, we see a motion to be, uh, to maintain the non-resident tuition rate at $7,000 for year 2025.
Second.
Motion's made, second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And, you have a list of policies in front of you there, that I will not read, but, uh, some will be changed, some will be revised, some added, and some removed, as indicated on the, on the list in the items for information. A motion being ordered to approve revisions to policies and procedures as listed.
Somebody.
Sorry. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All right, now, uh, we need to go into executive session, a motion to go into executive session. Motion's made.
Second.
Seconded, full call, and.
Aye.
Aye.